Counselors. Okay, Counselors, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Hey, first on the agenda, we have a roll call. All right, Ms. Martinez?
All Counselors present, with Counselor Carson previously requesting to be excused, and his absence is excused.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the agenda approval.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor V. Hill. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Carson from the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, we have consent, I'm sorry, citizen comments. This is the portion of the agenda to where those who have turned in their comment cards, we would ask that you come up to the podium and make your comments, we do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any comment cards.
I don't have any either, Mayor.
Okay, so if you don't mind, can you give instructions to the people who are on Zoom of how they can raise their hand so we can recognize them to make comments if they would like?
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment right now, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen if you're on a telephone dial star nine. Okay, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and move on down to consent calendar A, Counselor Jan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, all right. Up next on the agenda, we have regular business, golf board annual update.
Hello, Counsel. How's everybody tonight? So I'm Eddie Valdez, and I'm on the golf board here in Alamosa, Cattails. Just share our kind of state of the union, so to speak, out at Cattails Golf Course. I've been on the golf board for a few years and I've seen some really low lows out there, some really tough times and some scary times where we thought we probably weren't going to have a golf course moving forward. Some really, really hard, hard meetings and pushback from membership, et cetera, but we, as a golf board, came to the city and said, we need help, and you guys answered the call. And so through all of that, I mean, the city stepped up and took a chance on trying to revitalize and revive the golf course from the state that we were in. And obviously, there's always pushback in different directions, but we're, you know, we're a few years into this and we have really turned things around out there. And obviously, it's through the help of, of what the city has been able to give for us and do for us and, and give the guidance and support that we needed to get where we're at today. So we're proud of a lot of things out there. The golf course continues to grow on many levels. We've we've increased our revenue year after year for the last three years. We've consecutively gone up and exceeded the numbers that we budgeted and hoped to, to reach. This year, we had a $60,000 jump in membership increase, which was pretty huge. Kind of to backpedal just a touch, when, when COVID hit and there wasn't a whole lot to do and we were all working from home and doing the things that we had to do, golf was one of those things that became kind of a beacon of, of hope for some sort of activity and it really reinvigorated the golf industry as a whole and it was a blessing for us in that sense. Alamosa's course, I, I believe, is a hidden gem. I really truly believe that what we have out here and, and the things, the amenities that we bring to, to to the golf industry are really top shelf and it's all here in Alamosa. Our tournaments, our things that we do when we bring in outside golfers, I can tell you, they rave about the course, the condition, the atmosphere, the whole thing. And, and all of those things are direct relation to what's happened since the city's gotten involved with us. So like I said, membership increase, huge numbers, merchandise sales out of the golf course. So the Golf Pro Shop, the merchandise was kind of non-existent. If you walked in there as a golfer, you kind of walked around, you looked around and said, well, I've seen that shirt for the last four years or I've seen this or this or, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of stuff that you were interested in, in jumping in there. This year, we had another $37,000 increase in merchandise sales. So this is following two previous record years, so really good things. Green fees, that's the membership thing is big, obviously, that means people are believing and they're coming and they're, and they're wanting to be a part of it and they're wanting to participate on a regular basis. The green fees, that's the day-to-day play, that's the people that may not have a time, have time for a membership, may not have the interest in a membership, but they want to go out and play occasionally. And we increased by $20,000 in green fees this last year, so another significant increase for us there. Along with that, cart fees were another big increase, we increased about $16,000 in cart fees this year. So as we kind of bring all those things together, you know, the carts, that they're being used, they're being they're excellent, we got an excellent fleet, I mean, it's just all top shelf stuff out there, so it's really nice. And tournament revenue, so that's kind of the outside, the, the outside factor where, where we host a couple of different things every year that bring some outside talent to the course, things like fundraisers for Adams State Football, that's always a very, very popular tournament. Annual Kayler Individual Stroke Play Tournament is very, very popular. But along with that, we've grown in popularity by leaps and bounds and we've actually decreased our tournament, tournament schedule from where it was five, six years ago, where we were like so crowded that almost our day-to-day play took a hit. We, we felt like we were kind of choking off the ability for somebody to grab their clubs and say, I'm going to go out to Cattails and go play nine holes. So those things have all kind of changed and, and we think for the better. Junior golf. So the lifeblood, the, the thing that's going to carry us into the future is probably at a peak that I haven't seen since maybe I was a kid. I didn't play junior golf, but I had a ton of friends that were in junior golf and played junior golf and those numbers dwindled over the years and now the program has seemed to take new life. I live out in the neighborhood and when I'm on my way to work, I can tell you, I see people pulling in one after another, after another, dropping kids off, spending time, having a cup of coffee, sitting out on the patio, enjoying the, the atmosphere, the scenery and, and getting to watch their kids learn the game of golf, so it's really cool. Some of the stuff we do out there, men's league, that's a staple, we, we're at capacity in men's league. We, we, every year, we have a surplus of teams that want to get into men's league and we just don't have the space, the carts, et cetera. Women's league, they changed the format a couple of years ago and we've seen a reinvigoration of play and excitement and kind of broke away from what felt like maybe a constrictive format into something that seems to be a lot more user-friendly in the women's league. And while we haven't seen a ton of growth, we have seen a lot of excitement, so. And then we've added a co-ed lead or a couple, couples league on Thursday nights. You show up, if you want to play, you play. It's, it's really informal, but everybody gets together and, and it seems to bring a bond and unity out there amongst couples on the course. So there's a lot of really good things that are going on out at Cattails. The the course has gone through some really exciting things this year. And probably number one has been the fact that while it was discussed and we were hoping and praying that along with that front nine irrigation system that happened a couple of years ago, that we would be able to do the back nine irrigation and we knew that it was an out-there project, it was something that we, we were all hoping for and longing to happen. And this year, in probably what was some of the scariest times, our back nine irrigation system started to fail significantly. And the sprinklers stopped communicating with each other and things weren't working and, and we had a staff that was scrambling constantly at 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, trying to find ways to get everything working and get the computers and things talking to each other and get sprinkler heads going on. And we were struggling with trying to keep a back nine alive. That irrigation system was just like the front nine, it was past its life and you just make the best of it. But we, as a, as a golf ward and as a golf community, sat out there quietly talking to each other and, and kind of praying that we were going to make it through the year with the, you know, with our existing irrigation system because the amount of leaks and things that we had going on were pretty, pretty scary. So it's, and we, we talk about it and this is kind of John Atencio's words, and John is our head pro and he isn't here tonight, but he calls it the three miracles that happened at Cattails this year. And so I'm going to share how John viewed this because I think it was really kind of a cool thought, but through all of this, the irrigation companies, they're scheduled years out. So to get in and get in their plan and get in their, in their line of, of being able to come in and do the install, it's, it's tough. It's not just like a, hey, we're ready, we got the money, let's go. I mean, that doesn't just solve the problem. So kind of miracle one that John calls it is Heritage Links, they installed our front nine irrigation system a few years ago. They had a job that was scheduled here in Colorado and that job fell through. So they were, they were open, they had a spot. And the fact that they had equipment in Colorado that wasn't too far away was kind of a, like, hey, maybe we should do some things and I'll, I'll point at Andy because Andy was a huge, huge factor in getting all this together, but Heritage Links fell through, their job fell through and they had an opening for us. Miracle number two. Andy Rice secured a $500,000 grant to help fund this project. Without that, we, I mean, we're still years away and maybe even longer. And we, and honestly, without making this sound life and death, I, I honestly think we would have lost our back nine course at Cattails. I really think we were, our irrigation was in that dire of a, of a position. But anyway, Andy pulls off the miracle, finds the grant money and gets this all together. And then the last piece of the puzzle was getting all the materials together. So, you know, as we've all gone through this pandemic and shortage of materials in every field, same thing happens with irrigation piping and equipment and things like that. So all these things kind of came together and we, we were blessed, we, in my opinion, saved the back nine. I don't, I don't think that's I don't think that's inappropriate to say, I, I really think we were fortunate and the, and the back nine at the Cattails Golf Course was saved. Heritage Links was able to get the main line installed in the fall, along with finishing up the lines and heads on three of the holes on the back nine. So we are heading into the spring and as the spring thaw comes, they'll come in and complete the last six holes and we will be fully functional again. And hopefully, it'll be a lot like what happened on the front nine where we find ourselves in a place of being able to utilize our water and do the things that we're supposed to do to be good stewards and, and also produce a very good product. So those are, those are kind of some of the things that are going on at Cattails. Along with that, we have Britt Jarden, he's been our superintendent out there for a few years and Britt is, he's nearing his retirement. And as much as he loves golf and as much as he loves the course, on any given day, he says, I'm ready and, and then a week later, he says, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm going to be here for a while. But we've talked and talked and, and it's come time to manipulate our, our funds for staffing and we have put out, you know, a position to be an assistant under Britt Jarden and learn the ropes of Cattails Golf Course. Because I know everybody's probably kind of familiar and been out there and understands what goes on, but until you're on that property and see the size of it and, and understand the infrastructure of, of everything that's going on out there, it's hard to fathom just how intricate all the details are from this sprinkler head on this hole and this corner and, you know, those things that we talk about. All of us that are very familiar with the course, we talk about freely, it's really hard to pick up. So we are going to move forward with hopefully, a qualified applicant and we've had a handful of locals and maybe that'll be something that comes together, we, we hire the right local person and somebody that wants to be in the valley and stick around for a long, long time. So we're moving forward on that piece of the puzzle as well. I think that's kind of really the, the biggest lay of the land there. I mean, funding is, funding is has just been, I mean, revenue's just been growing year after year and, and we all look at each other and, and we wonder, can we do it again, can we do it again? And it just seems to keep happening, but the product that we're putting out there is, is really become second to none in Southern Colorado and, you know, tip of the hat to the city and, and all the things that you guys have all done for us to be able to put that product on, you know, on the ground. Because when, when we have people come from out of town, we've said this before in here, but year after year after year, they say this place is amazing and you guys do an amazing job around here. And it's our staff, obviously, the golf board doesn't do anything, we just kind of stand around and clap for the staff, but we also applaud y'all for being there to support us. I don't know if anybody has any questions of us, but.
Sure, what we'll do is we'll open up the mic, thank you for that presentation. Counselor Hensley?
So I've been the city representative, our city council representative for eight years, I think I'm in my ninth year now on the golf board. So obviously, I've been through the whole transition of prior to the city taking over and seeing that difference. And so I will also say that as a board, what's really nice is how you can all focus instead of how to make sure payroll gets paid is more focusing on, on how to continue to grow the golf course and, you know, such as the junior league and things like that. And it's just so refreshing and Andy, your department has made such a difference to making this happen. But you're right, it's something to be truly proud of. But also as a golf board, you guys, a lot of the people that are on the golf board were on there prior as well and their heart and passion for that golf course really also made this all happen. So I want to thank all of you and the golf board for all you've done as well.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honestly just going to echo what Counselor Hensley says. I really enjoyed the, the presentations that the different boards do, but I really enjoyed this one because I could tell that your heart was in it. And so I commend you and I definitely commend your staff because I know that what we're hearing tonight is also slowing down, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll wrap things up. I, I appreciate everything that you, the golf board and your host staff do out there at the golf course. I remember when the golf course was struggling a little bit and people in the community would say, they would come up to counsel and say, hey, we need to keep the golf course because it is an attraction to our community. It helps us to retain, retain people and employment and also attract people for employment. It's very good to hear that you had the three miracles, including a half a million dollars. I'd call that 500,000, 500,000, 500,000 miracles, yeah, which was a good grant right there, pretty good, real good. And just really glad to see the progress and the passion that all of you dedicate daily to the golf course. So keep up the great work.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, any other comments?
Nope.
All righty, well, thank you so much. We look forward to hearing about growing revenue again next year.
Okay, all right, okay, Counsel. Up next on the agenda, we have a quarterly update on housing in downtown. Ms. James?
Walking slowly since I just emailed the presentations to Holly and Heather. Sorry, guys. I wasn't sure what that look meant. If I walk slow enough, maybe they will read my mind. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
I am here for your quarterly housing in downtown update and then sort of like a levy 101. We can start, we can start here, okay. So projects from September to today, the Walsh came down, I could have done a whole slide just on the Walsh. The great saga of trying to be the intermediary between the behemoths that are CDOT and EPA was very interesting. A lot of things worked out and CDOT was kind of lenient and Harry was able to bring in traffic control at the last second. So it was also kind of a miracle. We never saw final numbers for what it cost to demolish the Walsh, but we were given estimates early on that it was between 1.1 and 1.3 million. So that's just sort of what we're anticipating it costs, I don't think the EPA will probably ever tell us. They were great partners, didn't bat an eye at some of the final invoices that came in and they just took care of it. So we haven't heard from them since, which is probably a good thing, but they did beautiful work. The color-changing light on San Juan that were funded by ASU, they're up. They're much more complicated than I would anticipate any lights would be, but it is the 21st century. So they've got Wi-Fi and they do change color. I think the hope is that they'll be blue for Real Rio. And then, of course, they need to be green several times a year to celebrate the fact that they were donated by ASU. IT is working diligently to figure out some of our firmware issues and make sure that the dedicated internet is consistently working. So if we have a couple of little outages, it's just because they're incredibly modern lights and that means they don't always work. Valhagen clock restoration is going forward, that's it, after it was sandblasted and it's painted green. It's over at Van's Machine Shop now, getting all the inner workings done and we're just ordering the last component, so for the mechanization. So it should be installed this spring is our hope. Next slide, please. Okay, funding, this is sort of cheating because we got this grant a long time ago, but technically, we just started sending, spending the money, so I figured it counted. So basically, we kicked off the $1.3 million Hunt Avenue Cultural Trail. We finally got the negotiations done with our second highest rated contractor. The first one, we could just never come to an agreement on how much it would cost. I mean, ultimately, CDOT sort of set forth how much we could spend on engineering and realistically, there's only so much you can spend in order to still be able to build the project. So this even came in a little bit high, but not as high as our other applicant. So SEH is a great company, they helped us do the road diet in 2021. They also have been working very patiently for the entire time I've worked for the city on the RRFP project, which is a rectangular rabbit flashing beacon. So we mostly work out of their Durango office, but they do, they're an international firm, so they're all over the country. So they have lots of assets, they tend to be a little bit more hard engineering, but they've got some interesting solutions and they, we signed the contract and they were out surveying the next week. So they know that time is of the essence and they're out there and they're working and they're a good company to work with. Next, please. That is my lovely Biata in my office, hand painting our Valhagen clock. So this was part two in the Alamosa Citizen. She's been featured all over the country, she's been in a newspaper back east a couple of times where these clocks are actually originally built. So she's fun to Google in case you get bored later. And that was, that was the second part of the story, it's a great story if you haven't read it. And then we also did some early outreach with the Alamosa County Assessor. We met with Sandra Hostetter, the city manager and I, to get her on board with at least talking about what tax increment financing would look like and what it would mean for her office. It's a lot of work for an assessor's office to start that. I guess she talked to the Pueblo County Assessor who told her to, like, don't do it at all costs. But Sandra is a team player and pro-community and pro-downtown, so she seems very open to it. So that is downtown between September and now. Housing, Airport Road Housing kind of is chugging along. The project manager is actually out of public work, so we don't have as much to do to the day with the day-to-day. Did meet with some partners with La Puente, the Housing Coalition and the Behavioral Health Group, as well as the city manager, sort of doing some planning for outreach and also sort of codifying what the rental requirements will be for the units themselves. So a lot of work's happening behind the scenes, even on the administrative side for the Airport Road Housing, which is now called New Horizons, good, okay. And then I'm doing the regular reporting and meetings with the Behavioral Health Administration, which is kind of funny because it's a behavioral health organization at the state level and they want to talk about all the programs that we're doing for behavioral health and I'm like, we're still building housing, guys, but we'll get there. And then Biata also has been working diligently on these really cool social media posts that will go out. These are still draft versions, but they've got some animation, which is fun. And then also, they're really just housing basics, you know, so one of them is like, what is section eight? And, you know, what are housing rehab resources in our community? Just really digestible, you can look at them on Facebook and click and follow the links and try to find the information about housing as fast as possible. And this is in addition to all the new housing information we have on our website. So these are fun and colorful and I think they'll get people's attention when they go live. Next, please. So Heather and I presented in Avon about the 1.9 More Housing Now grant and then in November, we were told that we were secured it. So it was a great presentation and it was, it was really one of those shining moments where you realize how amazing Tarazool is and what a transformative project it is. And the fact that they chose Alamosa to build 406 new housing units and it was, it was pretty awesome. Like it was, and we got a lot of kudos from Dole's staff and then even Town of Bennett kind of followed up with us after and was like, how did you do it? Like, how did you crack the housing code? As if we woke up one day and just were like, oh, we, we know how to do this. And so the next slide, we actually, Heather and I ended up talking to the Town of Bennett. But, and just having a good conversation with them, really encouraging them to do a housing needs assessment, housing action plan. You know, there was sort of a rush of everybody doing those when the ARPA money was coming through and I think it's died down. But I mean, I, we can't stress enough how important our housing action plan has been in giving us guidance and what we need to do for housing and how we can be an asset. I mean, I think we approach housing developers very differently than we did before that work was done. And then this is, you know, two, three years of arduous work on housing to try to catch up. And so that's how we did it, but it was still kind of neat for a front, like a smaller front range community, but to ask how Alamosa has gotten so far ahead in the housing game. I also attended Housing Colorado, which is a very humbling experience if you go with the Alamosa Housing Authority Director because Dawn is like a celebrity at the state housing level, just so you know. She knows all the cool people, it's very, very intimidating. And then we've met with a contractor with San Luis Valley Development Resources Group and the Council of Governments. He's actually kind of one of the brains behind the project they did on the Eastern Plains, where all six of the counties on the Eastern Plains pooled their ARPA money and built housing. And so even at the time, I actually took a picture of my notes from the housing conference in 2021 and sent them to him because I'd written genius in caps. But really some visionary ideas. So it's exciting to see SLV COG and DRG sort of get into housing and realize that it really ties closely with economic development, but also that they've hired a contractor to do their work that has shown that he's really capable of multi-jurisdictional, multi-county housing projects that are successful. So that's an exciting thing for the valley as a whole. And then the Housing Authority, we did some visioning at Joyful Journey, not in the pools, in the, in the, the working spaces. And, and really did a strategic plan. And I think that we have a, a good direction. Housing Authority, I think, has been in a kind of a difficult place with growing pains the last few years. And I think that we have a, a good direction. Housing Authority, I think, has been in a kind of a difficult place with growing pains the last few years. And I think there's a really strong board in place that councils place there. And I think that they're, they're open to the idea of expounding their number of housing units and being a partner on special tax projects. So all the things that they were really against when I started with the city and had a long way to come, they're really there. And they have it like codified in a plan form. And it's one of those times where you don't feel like the needle's moving with an organization maybe or the progress that you've made. But the Housing Authority is doing some really brave things and making some really excellent progress, so. And that is the end of downtown and housing.
Okay, so we have some questions for you. Okay, Counselor, uh, Yan V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rachel, for the presentation. Myself being the liaison on the HPEC. I've gotten a few calls about the Valhagen clock. It's a very, uh, passionate topic for some of those folks. Um, will we as a council decide where that's going to end up or are they doing that?
So the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee did decide. So I think it was a meeting in early summer. Um, we did take testimony from the public. There were people crying in the audience because they felt so strongly about it. Um, but ultimately they decided to put it in front of the Cavleys Building, which I think is one of the locations that's most strongly held. We also had a couple of our community volunteers kind of threaten to quit unless we put it there. So it was, it was both a very emotional process and a little bit of blackmail, but it worked out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Yan V Hill. Okay, I don't see any other lights lit up, so I'll just wrap up this segment. I know you have another segment on the levy. Thank you once again for sharing that information. Um, your team do so much in the community. I'm glad to see all these positive things being captured and also documented and also shared with the community and the public. It just shows that we are making a forward progress, uh, in the housing area. Um, I, I know you have that meeting with the town, well, you had the meeting with the Town of Bennett. And I was really thrilled to get an email the other day from the, I believe it was Boulder County, wanted to reach out to you and your team about the work that you all are doing and that was very impressive. It's like, wow, cool. So keep it up. And Biata, the work that she's doing on that clock is amazing. So tell her, we encourage her to continue to do that. And then just one other thing, I like your slides, the motions in them, that's pretty cool.
All Biata.
Okay, that's Biata. I like that. Good, good deal. Okay, ready for the next one?
Those are actually part of the social media postings. So when they go live on Facebook, they're illustrated. And so they move and they have animations. So not only are they bright and colorful, but they also animate, so they will catch people's attention. So we will force people to learn about section eight housing. We will.
I like it.
So Rachel, we need access for the PowerPoint for the, the levy. And so I think, I think Holly requested it if you could provide it.
Sure. Part of the reason I had to send the email twice is because it wouldn't let me share it with you at all. Is it working now? It should work.
It's working now. So just give us one second.
This is my lack of preparation, not Holly's ability to access a, a document. Okay, so this is, I know that we're all relatively familiar with the levy project. So this is partially for our newest counselor. Um, and I'm sure as a lifelong Alamosa mem- community member, you know about some of the history. Probably you know some of the more sordid history, but this is just sort of a thirty thousand foot view of the Alamosa Levy Project. So what is the Alamosa Levy? It's a six point four mile earthen berm that's south and north of the Rio Ground that protects the city from the hundred year flood. The hundred year flood's also the one percent flood. Uh, the right bank is the one that's closest to the city and it parallels the river, so it follows the river the whole way through. The left bank, um, parallels the river right up until you get to the farm park. Um, and there's sort of an offshoot onto the city ranch. And I don't think a lot of people know that. This illustration is kind of to show that, I, I think a lot of people think the dike on the northern side of the river is part of the levy system, but it's not. Um, the levy system itself actually goes up through the ranch, goes up through by the Blanca Vista ponds and terminates at, uh, the county road there. Um, why do we need a levy system? Because we've had, um, the levy system protects us from the hundred year flood. That's what it's designed to do. And since eighteen sixty nine, we've had eleven serious flooding events, the largest of which was the nineteen twenty seven flood, which stopped all rail traffic in Alamosa. Three people died and five of our bridges got washed out. And that is a photograph of the nineteen twenty seven flood. Um, then twenty sixteen Alamosa County Hazard Mitigation Plan rated this as the highest threat to our community. So when they did the rankings in that plan, which are, I think, generally accepted to be FEMA rankings, it would be catastrophic. So levy failure would result in potentially multiple deaths, obviously property damage. And we'd lose the lot, we'd lose our access to critical facilities for at least seventy two hours. So the, the highest threat to our community is the loss of the levy system. Um, this number is outdated, twenty sixteen, obviously doesn't represent all the increases in the construction industry since COVID and right before. But just the losses from a, a flood, not even the levy breach, but a flood in our community could be as much as fifty seven million dollars. Um, the levy system is certified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, without certification, every single household in Alamosa that has a mortgage will have to pay flood insurance. And flood insurance is such that if you've ever looked, um, it's only protects up to two hundred thousand dollars of damage. So if more damage than two hundred thousand dollars is done, you're just out of luck. Um, and it's prohibitively expensive. So it, it probably does mean the difference between probably our bottom quarter of people who are eligible to get mortgages now would not be eligible because it would increase the cost of their, it would change your, um, your monthly payment so significantly that people wouldn't be able to qualify for mortgages. So it's, I mean, the one percent flood is always coming. The hundred year flood is, you know, you never know what's going to come, but it's, it's only a matter of time. And the thing about the certification from FEMA is that if we lose our levies, people will pay flood insurance and that one is guaranteed. Next, please. Okay, so this is just sort of the timeline. I've used this a couple times, but, um, we built the levy between nineteen eighty five and nineteen ninety eight. We built the first two phases, so the southernmost phases, so down by the, uh, county line and then sort of up to the highway, state highway bridge, the one sixty bridge. Those were sort of the portions we built. And then the Army Corps of Engineers actually built the final portion. So we built two portions. It was our match for the project, sort of like a m- modern grant. Um, so it was deficient almost from the time it was built. So there were errors. Um, there were just things that weren't built up to standards. Everything ratcheted up after Katrina. So and I think the perception at the time was that the rules changed. The rules didn't change. Um, what happened is the way that FEMA enforced the rules changed. And so that is the way that levies were regulated and built. Um, but I think they let us pass on a couple of things that, that weren't quite to FEMA's standards. And once Katrina did catastrophic damage, uh, everybody was in the same boat. And so when, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers came to inspect our levy in two thousand eight, they rated it unacceptable, which basically means that you're just a, you know, one motion away from being, uh, kicked out of the FEMA program. FEMA kind of works hand in hand. FEMA is like the regulatory agency that controls the insurance program and whether or not you can be insured. And then the Army Corps, they're kind of like, they build the levies, sometimes they maintain them. And then they have a special insurance program that if your levy's destroyed, they'll come in and build it. So not only did they say that we were unacceptable, but they also kicked us out of that program. So if our levy's destroyed in a catastrophic event, it can't be replaced by the Army Corps. Um, so between two thousand four and two thousand eleven, the city commissioned several studies on how we could fix the levy. Um, I think the thought that we would be replacing the levy that we just finished building made the whole pill a little difficult to swallow. But in two thousand eighteen, got really, really serious, hired Woods Engineering and just said, hey, we've spent a lot of money and wasted a lot of time. And FEMA is kind of perpetually threatening to take our levy certification away. So what do we really need to do to get certified? And so it was a comprehensive report. It took two, three years to have the Woods report completed, but it laid out all the steps we needed to make sure that our levy could get certified, which of course involves, uh, working with FEMA, working with the Army Corps, all of those good things. Next, levy project, the way that we refer to it in my office and is that it's a multi-year project to repair and rehabilitate the levy so that we can maintain our levy certification with FEMA. Uh, parts of the levy are almost forty years old and must be rebuilt. And then also again, we're not built to the correct standards post Katrina. Um, this is a project that we're doing in partnership with Alamosa County. We jointly hired AECom, which is probably the leading firm in the world in terms of dam and levy design. Um, huge multinational firm, just, I mean, there are, there are a few massive engineering projects in the water world that AECom has not had a part of. Um, but they come with a price tag. So the cost of engineering is one point three million. Our share of that is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, they did estimate for us this spring so that we could start pursuing funding for construction, that the cost of the levy improvements as they stand today, which will change as we develop our engineering plans, is twenty five point five five million. Next, okay, so what will construction look like? This is sort of a worst case scenario map of construction. Um, so the levy is deficient by FEMA standards, which means that we don't have three footer freeboard. So freeboard is just like floodplain manager talk, which just means that when the hundred year flood comes, the water level is going to be here. And FEMA wants you to build everything three feet above that. So you're extra, extra careful and safe. Um, and so base flood elevation is how they describe that. It's where the water is at the hundred year flood. So if we were strictly going by FEMA standards as they're written, every place that, here's the hundred year floodwaters, here's three feet above, we'd have to move the levy up to the three feet above everywhere. And so the places that don't meet that are the places highlighted in red. That's almost the whole levy. And so part of the Woods Report recommended that we were able to do, because we don't get the flood events we used to in the past because of climate change, because of the channelization of the river, because how much is diverted for agriculture. Um, they believe that we can actually do two feet of freeboard. So hundred year floods here, we do two feet above. And if we can do that, the parts we need to fill, fill or replace or, or build up is probably a quarter of what you see here. So, um, we usually show you both maps and they're available online if you're interested in, in the Woods Report. But for the time being, worst case scenario, we would have to rebuild everything that's red. Next, please. Um, just kicked off the sixty month engineering process with AECom. We check in with them pretty regularly. The first deliverables were due, uh, at the beginning of this month. They gave us the environmental evaluation. It's close to two hundred pages. But it's the, uh, sensitive wetland and all of the, uh, endangered and critical habitat work that needs to be done. So that's in our office being reviewed and being reviewed concurrently by the county. And then we've also been, for the better part of two years, working with the Colorado Water Conservation Board, which is sort of the working arm of FEMA in Colorado. So you don't usually interact with FEMA themselves in terms of floodplain management, but you interact with the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Um, we've also had pretty regular discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers. And we've also been talking to Senator Bennett and Senator Hickinlupra's office. So we did do a congressionally designated funding application for five million, which we weren't successful with. We've also sort of pursued some, uh, Water Resource Development Act funding. So we've, we've gone down a couple of different avenues in terms of funding, but we don't necessarily know how that will manifest yet. I think everybody knows that twenty five million is not something that Alamosa can come up with locally. Um, but it might have to be a combination of things. Maybe, um, I think the county administrator put it best that we can hope for maybe being able to secure eighty percent grants of the twenty five million and then maybe twenty percent we have to make up locally with a bond issue or something. Um, and then also we got to go door to door, talking to residents this fall about encroachment trespass issues. Um, it was very interesting. Next slide, please. So encroachment trespass issues, which is really the reason I'm here today, because you may have been already getting phone calls. Um, FEMA, part of why they will threaten to take your certification is if you're not doing the appropriate, uh, operations and maintenance on your levy. So if you're not keeping up with maintenance, they don't have any reason to maintain your certification. Like the city's basically being, being told they're not doing their part. And frankly, we kind of haven't. So we have let people build things on the levy. We haven't been thorough enough in making sure that there's no fences and no structures. Um, and so there's a fair number. The hot tub all the way on the left is actually infamous. I don't think I've ever been to a meeting with the Army Corps where they haven't made a joke about that hot tub. Um, it has since been sold though, so that one is resolved. It's a longstanding issue that's actually gone away. Um, so when I went to talk to them, they're like, oh, we just sold that hot tub. So now we just have to worry about the deck. Um, but they don't allow you to build anything on the levy. You can't have gates, you can't have tetherball courts, you can't have hot tubs, you can't have fences. They don't allow anything to penetrate because if, in the, all the levy is, is a big dirt wall. And so if you penetrate it, you weaken it. And so really like, you're not supposed to have trees on the levy, you're not supposed to have irrigation systems. Any of those things could structurally compromise the levy itself. Um, and then you can't have anything that obstructs access. So if we need to get to a part of the levy in order to do maintenance work, you can't have a gate or a building or a giant power pole. And so those are kind of the things that we're addressing. So we identified thirty six trespass issues in the field in the summer of twenty twenty two. Um, some of those are our own. So when I say we went and talked to sixteen property owners, it's not that we decided to just leave out the other twenty. It's that a, a handful block actually of the trespass issues belong to the city ourselves. And then the other ones have to do with utilities and we'll have to get with, um, mostly Excel Energy to try to work through some of those. And then a handful of them are just like multiple trespass issues on a single property or adjacent properties that are owned by the same people. Um, so the conversations went well. They weren't all very pretty. Nobody likes being told what to do with their private property. But I think they, we told them again and again that council had asked us to speak to people in person and to have a conversation and not just send it in personal letter. So I think that they appreciated that. I do think there's a pretty big education disconnect in what the floodplain means and, uh, what the risk is. I was told a number of times that houses right on the river aren't in the floodplain, which isn't accurate. Um, so I do think there's a disconnect there and that also that downtown would flood before any of the houses on the river, which is also a little weird. But it's, it's partially just because we do have stormwater flooding in, in Alamosa and people get the two confused. So I do think there's a public education component of this because when construction actually happens, we do have to tear down trees. And whether we're doing the work or the Army Corps is doing the work, they will remove these trespass issues. And so if you have a deck or a fence or an anything and it's on the levy and they need to get to it, they will pull it out. And we told property owners, and when I say we, I mean me, I told property owners that I don't know that the Army Corps won't send a bill. I don't know. So we're giving people a heads up probably a year or two in advance so they can have quotes for the work and do it themselves. Because even though, uh, ultimately we don't know how much control we'll have over construction. And I certainly would prefer someone do it locally, pull out some fence posts and have a federal agency do it and send you a bill for ten times more than what it would have cost you to do it yourself. So just sort of warning them about unknowns. And then I think this is the last slide. Next step is we finish our engineering with AECom. We magically find twenty five million dollars and construct the levy improvements, uh, obtain our FEMA levy accreditation and then really protect our constituents from flood damage and paying flood insurance. So this is a legacy project. This is a project that we will all be working on for at least another five to ten years. But, um, it is pretty much kicking up now and you will get questions from the community. So that's all.
Counsel, anybody? Well, I want to thank you and your team for going out and knocking on those doors. Um, I have heard from people who live on the river. And a lot of them tend to believe that they own the property all the way to the river. Um, there's a lot of misinformation. I'm glad that you're sharing with them, uh, the facts. A lot of them think that we tell FEMA what to do. FEMA works for us. It's not true. But that's what a lot of people think, that we have that power to, um, maybe not implement what, what they require us to do. So I'm really thankful that you, um, have done that door knocking. Also, I know you've written the letters too, because we've heard from some of our constituents about the letters that you've sent out. Just very glad that you're giving people plenty of time, um, to, to make those adjustments before other options take place.
And a lot of people do own to the center of the river, but just because they own to the center of the river, we still have an obligation to keep our levies free of obstructions. So it's a difficult, it's a nuance there that's, it's hard for most people to understand.
Yes, well, thank you for explaining it to them. Really do appreciate it. Okay, all right. No other questions. Good job. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, under City Manager Legal, Motion Authorizing the Sponsorship of Five Thousand Dollars and In Kind Support to Eight Entities in Varian Amounts. In varying amounts uh as detailed in the council communication.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you are aware, several years ago, city council created a sponsorship committee. And that committee receives applications for the first half of the year, and then they receive applications for the second half of the year. Prior to that, it was just a first come, first serve and council really had no way of knowing. You know, if we give this much money to to this event, do we still have enough? Because what events are coming up in the future? So. This more organized manner really allows council to know how to split up the limited funding among different events. So this is for the first six months of twenty twenty four. We received eight applications. Um, on the sponsorship committee was counselor Jan V Hill and counselor um Carson. And the recommendation from them is the following. The Cinco de Mayo Block Party would be two thousand plus the use of the stage. Probably one of the bigger changes is the sponsorship for the Alamosa Roundup. We've probably been closer to fifteen hundred in previous years. I know as their. Event is growing and their need from a facility perspective as it relates to electricity and other types of things. And so what what the committee did is let's just rethink this and instead of charging. The fees for the facility and charging for the electricity, it's a. This is you get to use it in the condition that it's in type of situation. Um, and so the. The actual dollar amount that we would be giving from a cash sponsorship is dropped to one thousand. But it does include use of the stage of two hundred, use of the tenant, three hundred, which was what we've had previously. But the venue um is estimated, um depending on how many days they have, anywhere from one thousand two hundred and fifty to one thousand five hundred. And then the electricity and waters estimated, again, depending on number of days, a hundred to a hundred and twenty. So it's, it's kind of doing it differently, but that also then allows us to stretch some of that funding to some of the other events. The Roland Deep Car and Bike Show was recommended at six hundred plus use of the stage. The Second Annual First Responder Appreciation Event is recommended at three hundred. The National Sport Rocket Launch um didn't request funding, just use of the tent. Um, a fourth annual Southern Colorado Spring Soree and Fourth Annual Juneteenth Safari, so just golf events. Um, six hundred dollars in use of the course. The Chamber Art and Award Gala was a new application, so the recommendation is for four hundred. And also new is the Mysterious Valley Productions Musical Acts for First Fridays and Juneteenth. So since this was new, um, we're looking at it maybe more from a seed money perspective. And so that recommendation would be at a hundred dollars, but also ensuring that they're working. Um, with the visitor center from a coordination perspective, since the visitor center really. Spearheads the the First Fridays and so making sure that's all coordinated and appropriately done. So that totals five thousand, which then still leaves five thousand for the second half of the year.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Sanchez, okay. Counsel, any uh comments before we make a motion? Okay, Councilor V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve. Uh, the five thousand dollars and in-kind support to the eight entities. In varying amounts as detailed in the council communication for the first half of the year.
I'll second, and I want to thank uh both Counselor V Hill and Carson for their hard work on this.
Um, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I too would like to thank you all for the, it really takes a lot of work to come up with those numbers. It takes a lot of time and. Um, trying to be fair means a lot. So thank you for your help and support on that. Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Please start voting.
One quick comment, Mayor. If I may, and this is probably just my personal opinion on things, but. Going back to some history with uh C- Counselor Grego, who's no longer here. But just a reminder that a lot of this stuff is seed money. And as as events grow and as. Groups grow and they, you know, that that money might go down so we can get it to another event or group who can. Start their their deal too, so.
Okay, thank you. Very good point. Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, motion waiving late charges of ten thousand dollars and interest of eight percent. From SLV Housing Coalition for the purchase of Century Mobile Home Park. And setting in August first, twenty twenty four as the new due date.
Can I ask a question? And I should have asked this prior. Do you know what I'm gonna ask?
You need to abstain.
Yeah, okay, as I do, okay.
So um two items, one, Counselor member Hensley does need to abstain since she's on the board um for SLV Housing Coalition. And then also Dawn Melgaris is on Zoom in case there are any questions um related to this. It's actually not a request um from Dawn. The the group had, the SLV Housing Coalition had sent a letter. Indicating um that with their payments and that the rest was going to be late. It was actually my idea to to request of council to waive the late fee and the interest. That the contract anticipates, and I feel that that's in line with the partnership of working with the housing coalition. It feels so long ago when um we had that situation where. The um out of state company was looking to purchase the mobile home. We knew from their previous um experience, the purchasing other mobile home parks that. Once they do, the rents and other expenses are quickly raised. Um, sometimes almost doubling what the residents are paying. And as we know from our housing assessment. Not only do we have a housing shortage, but we also need to really work at protecting the affordable housing that we do have and. Uh, Mobile Century Home Park represented. One of the last big areas from an affordable housing that was very vulnerable if this was going to happen. Um, Dawn and and the SLV Housing Coalition, as well as other partners. Were able to undertake just an enormous ordeal of trying to navigate the legalities of new state laws. And getting the attention of, you know, the people who were trying to sell it. As well as getting input, significant input from the residents and making sure the residents knew the different choices they had and. And so working through all of that, which was just amazing, um and probably exhausting. Um, then they also, once the residents decided that their preference would be for SLV Housing Coalition to purchase it, the task was to pull together the funding. Um, because even though. They they have a competitive edge because that's what the residents want. You you still don't get it for free. You you need to pay. Um, pretty close to to what the other offer was going to come in at. And so um John said. You know, on the path of pulling together different types of funding. At that point, they did approach the city of Alamosa. City Council authorized up to one million dollars from a loan perspective. Um, in order to try to save this, which was just amazing um from a, from a political leadership perspective. Once Dawn was done working with partners, the end, um, the final loan was just sixty thousand. So we went from. A possible one million down to sixty thousand. Since assuming ownership, the SLV Housing Coalition has had its hands full. The information wasn't provided to them. They didn't even get a database of. Who's living where, what the rents are, all of those types of things. The condition of the infrastructure was worse than what they were led to believe. Um, so there was a lot of time and effort and money spent fixing those situations. Now, all that said, of the loan for sixty thousand, it was supposed to be paid by the end of twenty twenty three. We did receive thirty five thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars, which leaves a balance of twenty four thousand, eight hundred and forty eight. The contract um that council authorized um has a ten thousand dollar late charge. And an eight percent interest that will charge on the remaining balance until that's paid off, if it wasn't paid off by the end of twenty twenty three. They also submitted a plan of how they expect to pay off the remaining portion, which is by paying about four thousand dollars a month. Um, so in essence, what I would recommend is we're just extending that deadline by about seven months. Um, in order from a partnership perspective, I don't see the value in charging a ten thousand dollar late fee in eight percent interest. Per the contract, though, that can only be waived by city council. So again, Dawn is on Zoom. If you have any questions for her and I'm here for any questions as well.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Uh, counsel, um, other than, uh, okay, Counselor, uh, Krebs?
Um, I just, I have, want to have one clarification, um, just for. The recording and everyone who's listening, um, that this. This waiver, if we vote for it, is just waiving the late charge and the interest. It is not waiving the rest of the payments. The rest of the payments will be made.
That is correct. The city will be made whole on the sixty thousand dollar loan.
Thank you. And since 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 Dawn is on, I just wanted to give her a quick shout out. She has done amazing work on this and. And I, I just commend her on almost every level.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Okay, alrighty. So, um, Counselor Jan V Hill?
Yes, sir. Uh, I move that we waive the late charge of ten thousand and interest of eight percent from SLV Housing Coalition. For the purchase of the Century Mobile Home Park and setting August first, twenty twenty four as the new due date.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would just like to make a comment to uh Ms. Melgaris and uh her team. I remember when this first project came up, it was a huge undertaking. A lot of people didn't think it was possible. All the work that they had to put into this and also collaborating with our city. Um, and and trying to make sure that what they were trying to do is was possible. And I still remember the million dollars to where council was really willing and able to put up that million dollars if need be. And then. When we found out we only needed to come up with sixty thousand dollars. That was an easy yes. So just like that was an easy yes. It seems like this is going to be an easy yes because it's the right thing. They keep it, they're keeping a lot of people in housing who deserve to have that opportunity. So we have a motion, second, no further discussion. Start voting, please. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously with Counselor Hensley abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, human resource and risk management. First reading of ordinance number two dash twenty four.
Okay, sorry, Mayor. Um, so this might be another easy yes because we don't have a lot of options and it turns out to be a pretty good deal for the city as well. Um, so as the city um was looking to renew our liability coverage and our property. Coverage, so this includes general liability, auto liability, law enforcement liability, public officials, errors and omissions liability, cyber. Liability, crime, crime coverage and equipment breakdown coverage. So this is, this is a whopper as far as insurance goes. For our coverage. Um, what we ran into is significantly. Due mostly to some of the changes in the state law as it relates to law enforcement liability. Um, there are a lot of insurance carriers that are no longer providing coverage. When you couple that with a, some of the increase in claims that we have from a property damage as well as um some of the lawsuits. We did not receive anyone who was willing to bid on our insurance coverage. For a while now, we had been interested in looking at SIRS, which is um. Obviously has quite the pre- press presence at the Colorado Municipal League. They're a key partner. Um, it's a pool of other cities. They're probably the main um insurance company for municipalities. They just had a very different. Application process than what we were used to using traditionally. But for this year, we went ahead and went through all of that. Um, effort and I have to thank Jolene and everyone um who worked with her on pulling all together that information. We went through it. They did take it to their board and they did vote that we could be included in their coverage. When we looked at um mirroring what our policy levels are now, because we feel that they are appropriate. Um, it looks like we will also see a savings. Um, which is exciting. So not only are we able to get coverage. I think we're going to have a little bit more control in how decisions are made with this new coverage as well. Um, there will also be um savings. So. What's before you tonight is an intergovernmental agreement. It is essentially saying that we're agreeing to their bylaws. Um, we're agreeing to this concept of self-insurance and how that's going to work. Um, and it allows us to move forward with this relationship.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Uh, Counselor Jan V Hill?
I got no questions, Mayor. I'm gonna move that we approve ordinance number two dash twenty twenty four. And set it for a first reading, excuse me, and set it for a public hearing and second reading on February seventh or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is, uh, we have a committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? No. Okay, how about s- staff announcements?
So as Bill is coming up, I'll go ahead and do a quick one. Next weekend is the Rio Frio Ice Fest, and so I would be remiss if I didn't say. Anything about that. Um, obviously, normally we have a competition between council and staff, but since I am out that weekend, I'm not talking very much smack talk. Because staff's been lukewarm. Um, they're just not that competitive, I don't think. So, um. I think we will see some and maybe, maybe they're just playing at low and and they're gonna pull in at the last minute, but personally, I don't want to do a lot of smack talk when I have. So I might have to present the award to you guys when it's over.
Yeah, that is refreshing.
Again, again, I know. So Ice Fest is coming up. It's a weekend full of events. You've got the bonfire, the walk. Um, I know of, there's just. Multiple things every day beginning on Friday. So, um. A lot of activities, I'm sure there's the, not the dunk tank, but the polar plunge um is a favorite. Um, those types of things. So I hope to see pictures. Of everybody out and about and we'll figure out how to keep points and keep track of things. So. Um, Bill, if you want to go ahead and do your update?
Okay, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, what I'm going to speak about right now is a a program that's uh been thought about for some time on various levels. Multiple people have thought about it and uh I I think the time has come that we look forward to implementing this. Um, so the Alamos City Fire Department has teamed up with both the Boys and Girls Club of Alamosa. And the San Luis Valley Retac. Uh, to provide a firefighter explorer program for the youth of the valley. Um, my wife's a teacher at Ortega Middle School. And every day I'm, I'm told about kids who show no hope, no, no spunk, nothing going on in life. Uh, just, just really down. And that's uh personally quite upsetting. Because if they don't get to exercise those things that all of us have been able to to do to get where we're at. Then we're going to have that cyclic situation of homeless or drug addiction or any of those things. So. Uh, we all want to do something positive for our youth. We want to give them an avenue. Uh, expose them to positive mentorship, teach them about a career that. Even if they don't go into it, they're going to be exposed to other things that might spark an interest. Basically, it it's a chance. Just like that movie years ago. You're saying there's a chance. Yep, there is a chance. And uh, we're very passionate about this. We, we want to help. We're seeing this. I hear it at home every night. So. Um, what are some of the uh stipulations? They have to be in high school or homeschooled, age fourteen to eighteen. Maintain a a two point O GPM, which um. That's, that's fine because. There are so many variables that determine why you're at a certain grade point average. So. Uh, in case anybody had questions about that, uh, they're going to have to commit to over seventy five hours of training and activities. Um, they will have a initial, uh, an initial pack test, just like firefighters do where it's a forty five pound tech, uh, pack. You gotta move three miles in forty five minutes. We don't expect all of them to pass, but. You gotta move three miles in 45 minutes. We don't expect all of them to pass, but we want them to go through that and then by the end of the, uh, their, their tour, hopefully they're able to get that. Or if they stick with it, maybe the next year. But we want to expose them to this field in, in just about all of its entirety without putting them in extreme dangerous positions. But sometimes raising ladders, yeah, we're, we already bought helmets. We're, you know, going to get all the protective gear and everything. Um, they'll also take written tests based on the essentials, uh, basic firefighter book. Hopefully get them to a point where they can test to be a firefighter one. This may take a couple of years, but should they choose this vocation, uh, they will then be one notch up above the competition that is the general public who don't possess that. Uh, we would like to get them their CPR certification and as many other things as we can. Um, uh, they'll be trained in the basics. Uh, once again, it's an effort to expose these kids to a career. Uh, hopefully it ends up in employment if they like it and we're just, uh, taking a pa, a piece of the pie and providing this particular aspect. And if other, uh, entities were able to do the same, we might be able to complete that pie and, uh, fulfill a lot of different interests. But in the meantime, this is what we're planning on doing. So, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club, Olivia and Rachel, if, if they're up for speaking, you're more than welcome. And then, uh, after they're done, then Raina with the San Luis Valley Retac. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. So, um, while, while he was dreaming of this project a couple of years ago, there were some other, um, leaders in our community who were also dreaming, uh, Counselor Hensley being one of them, when, who put together the Rise Grant. And the Rise Grant is actually a collaboration between Adams State University, where I currently work, um, the Boys and Girls Club of the San Luis Valley where Olivia works. Um, and we have been partnering together for, um, the last two, three years, going to valley schools to try to help, um, educators, um, with a very difficult job that they have of trying to broaden students' minds when, as, um, Bill said, that they are very, very hopeless. Um, and then we go in and we are trying to inspire the students by offering career exploration activities, bringing in business leaders to teach students about different careers and what's out there, giving train readiness, um, tr, career readiness trainings, um, to students and those opportunities to learn different skills, both the kind of hard skills like resume and interview trainings, but also what employers are saying students are really lacking, which is critical thinking skills, problem solving skills, emotional intelligence, um, to really be successful in a workplace. And, um, on top of that internship opportunities. So, um, over the years, being able to build relationships with the school districts and having growing relationships with our local businesses around the valley, um, has been really inspiring. And I would just like to say, um, from an Alamosa perspective, that it really is the kind of, um, economic hub of the whole San Luis Valley. And, um, when we have kids who are looking for internships, we have a lot who have to come here because there's not a lot of opportunity. So being able to offer these kinds of opportunities, not only for Alamosa students, but for all of the valley students is huge. And, um, we are really grateful and looking forward to this opportunity to working with our local fire chief, um, to be able to give this opportunity to students, to give them hope, um, not only Alamosa students, but students from other schools in the San Luis Valley as well, who are really interested in this and be able to use our grant to help provide a stipend payment to all of those students for the hours that they are completing.
Um, I will add, um, again, my name is Olivia Howe. I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs of the San Luis Valley. Um, I will add that, um, we are currently working under the Rural Coaction Grant. So Rise Grant has ended. We are now under Rural Coaction. Rural Coaction, um, is scheduled to end in June. So we will be looking for, um, additional funding to be able to support these internships moving forward. Um, we, we are looking at an Opportunity Now Grant, which is specifically based on healthcare. So we're looking at both physical and mental health, um, pathways, um, to build our community and our youth. Um, so it's been really great working with Rachel and ASU. Um, and yeah, we're really excited about this opportunity to work with the fire department. This is a really, really fun one, a really great one, and we're really looking forward to be able to support that.
Good evening. Um, so as many of you may know me, I am Raina Martinez. I am, um, SLB Retac Coordinator, but I also wear multiple hats in the community. So I am also here to represent the SLB First Responders Outreach, um, Program. This program was established by the Alamosa County to fund, funded through multiple grants, donations and sponsorships. The Alamosa County Commissioners support or understand the importance of the program and the mission in a way that they better, that better serves those that protect and serve, um, and sacrifice their, hold on. I had to write this at last second because I was told that we're going to be here. Um, the Alamosa County Commissioners understand the importance of the program and the mission in a way that better serve those that serve, protect and make significant sacrifices in our community. The program is, is designed to provide services, support to those that, um, serve our community. And then I understand that you guys are also part of that mission because you guys are also sponsoring or have sponsored all of our, um, proposals that we have provided you guys. And those, um, fundings have been able to help our first responders in a way that they're able to engage in the community. So this program, four out of the, or two out of the four pro, or projects that we have are focused on the youth of our community. Our four programs that we have under our, our projects that we have is the Peace Officer Mental Health, the Shield 1078, SLB Justice League and SLB Prom. Some of you may know SLB Prom as we are, um, right now trying to go into our schools to provide resources, um, support, engagement, especially during prom time, um, to make them a better safe place. So Prom stands for Prevention, Raising Awareness, Maintaining the Community's Safe and Oath. We hope that these students will create, commit an oath in our community to keep us safe and keep them safe as well. Um, although the program is established through Alamosa County, it's a region project. So it provides services to not only Alamosa, but the six counties in the San Luis Valley. So we're very excited to be able to collaborate with the Alamosa Fire Department and their new project as they will be contributing to our major projects' goals of providing services and the much needed services that our youth needs, um, and demands. With that, we are also hoping that we will be able to assist in the recruitment and retention with our first responders as, as a much needed need, resources in our valley. Um, we understand that sometimes our first responders do, um, go through one, um, career and, uh, cross into another. So we will see that either if they start with fire, they might be crossing over EMS or they might be, um, doing both, um, fire and law enforcement, as we do see this in the, our community right now. Those big things that we understand is that our community does, or our first responders do wear multiple hats because they have a passion for our community to serve and protect. And we understand that with that passion, we also need to be able to provide those supports that they also need in order for them to continue serving the community as they have been doing so. So, thank you.
Wow, I know the lights are going to light up, Kelly. Alright, go ahead. So, so what we'll do, we'll start at the very end, if that's okay for everybody and let everybody get a comment in. We'll start with, uh, um, Ms. Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
So, um, hearing your presentation, I'm really excited because the kids of our valley need something like this to broaden their horizons when it comes to careers and it, it's just exciting to me. I just want to let you know that that's just something that is very passionate on my end, you know, getting different perspectives to kids as what they can do in their lifetime. And so it's, it's very exciting. That, I loved your presentation.
Thank you very much. And all of us up here are very excited as well. And I, and I failed to mention this, that without the help of these ladies and their organizations, this may not be floating as smoothly as, as we'd like. So without their assistance, um, it wouldn't be to the level we'd like. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Hensley?
So definitely very excited as well. I, um, as Rachel mentioned, um, I was involved in the Rise Grant, which I feel like is, was the first sort of start of really, um, working with young, young kids and, and students to gi, give them real world experience and, and learning how to be interns and learning different professions and things like that. What I think this, is great about this is that it's an extension of that and it's just seeing it continue to grow. And what I think what you're going to do, um, and the department is really give them that foundation. They're going to get hands-on experience, something where they're going to be part of something which I think is so important. And then on top of that, even if they don't follow that path, they're going to learn commitment. They're going to learn, um, responsibility. There's so many things they're going to learn that they're going to take with them. And I actually am super excited to think that in, whether it's two years or four years, to hear a story of somebody who went through this program and how it changed their life. Because I know we're going to hear those kinds of stories. So I'm just, thank you so much for doing this. It just, it warms my heart and it's made my day.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. And, and I can't agree more that we do look forward to somebody coming back from a big department on the front range and saying, yes, I got hired with such and such department. Um, as cool as that would be, even just the impacts at lesser levels cumulatively have a great value. So, either way.
And I guess I'll just add to that, that what I meant when I hear the story, because it doesn't even mean that they were a firefighter, but just that it made a difference in their life.
Exactly.
So I agree 100%.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief and to the team, thank you for putting this program together. Chief, you mentioned this program to me, uh, before Christmas break, uh, at the Career Fair at Adams State, that you guys were cooking this up. And I thought this was a hell of an idea. Being an educator in K-12 education in high school, uh, there're just, there're just need, there's, there's a need for more and more diverse opportunities for students. And this is a, a great avenue. Um, so my, my question is, uh, I teach in center. How will, how will some kids up there learn about this program and what's the, what's the outreach look like?
Um, one of my assistants, Adam Lopez, he sent out flyers to each of the high schools throughout the valley. And, um, I'm assuming the principal or counseling section got a whole of that document, which further detailed, uh, this process. So what we're going to be doing moving forward, uh, we were actually going to be having an open house, uh, Saturday and Monday. But in speaking with, uh, my staff, the department, the people who are going to be involved, um, to get this to float better, uh, we're going to buy a little time. So we're going to hold off on those meetings and reconnect with the people who have communicated with us, who were going to be coming to those initial meetings this weekend and delay that probably three weeks to a month, which will give us time to have more equipment that is in route so that once this all starts, we're reducing the issues and red flags that come up that stall things out and create angst. So, um, we're going to acquire as much equipment as we can, get all of our documents in a row, waivers, uh, physicals and all those things so that when the kids come in, and we're looking for a maximum of 10, when they do come in, it's a, a much smoother transition instead of having to wait for this or that. You're welcome.
I'm going to jump in really quick and say, while, while our numbers are pretty close to that right now, um, uh, that's another thing that, that, um, Olivia, myself, and then our other grand partner, um, Michaela Parlow, um, will be supporting and is going out and doing that recruitment to schools because we're, we go out and are in the schools and talking to people one by one. So that's how we can support that recruiting process throughout the whole valley.
Well, if I can help support recruiting in center, please let me know. The counselor hasn't told me a thing. My principal hasn't told me a thing. And I know four or five dudes who would love to get involved with something like this.
Thank you, Counselor Yan V. Hill. Counselor Krebs?
Um, they've already said a great bunch of what I was going to say, but I wanted to add on to, I applaud the collaboration that all of you have done to make this happen. And it's just another example of what we can do here in the valley and in this community to bring these kind of programs to our youth is the collaboration that comes together. One person says, hey, I have an idea and everyone else says, uh, instead of downplaying it, they say, how could I be a part of it? And this is a true example of that. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselors Krebs. Chief Stone, Raino, Raina, Rachel and Olivia, this is amazing. If I could be a kid again, I would really be one of the applicants who apply for this program that, that you are putting on. It would reach, uh, I, I hope that it reach a lot of people here in the valley and I'm, I'm quite sure it will. And it's going to really help build that confidence and pride that a lot of the young people need to have. So I just really want to encourage you and wish you much success in your future endeavors as you, uh, build this program. Good job.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Mayor, if I could just say some, Olivia, you mentioned, um, looking at some of the funding for career pathways for healthcare. Um, we used to have the healthcare sector partnership, which then when COVID came, that, you know, focus was on some other items. But Kathy has shared with me that they are getting that back up and going. And one of the priorities for that, um, partnership, which had all the major healthcare employers, um, was looking at pathways and, and all of that. So I'll make sure, if you're not already engaged with Kathy, I'll make sure that she knows you guys are looking at that too, because I think it's going to pair really nicely with the discussions that that group's going to start having as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we have been in discussion with the attainment network, who is one of our, um, co-writing partners with the, um, Opportunity Now Grants that's upcoming. Um, but we are in the process of also putting together a new collaboration, um, which we're calling the Work-Based Learning, SLB Work-Based Learning Collaboration. And so it's a lot of those same partners. And we've had some preliminary meetings. We have our first big meeting coming up next week. Um, but that's really including the business partners and then a lot of those healthcare partners. So SLB Health, um, Behavioral Health, Valleywide, um, and just really trying to get a group together that is able to sustain this work moving forward. Uh, so keep your ears out. We're going to try and be putting this collaboration together and then we can have a more sustainable work group.
Alright. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay, that brings us to the last item. Go ahead.
Oh, Mayor, I, did you, oh, Holly had something, one last thing for staff update.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so during your March, um, meetings, spring break happens to land during your second meeting of the month. So we wanted to just bring it up to you guys and see if you guys wanted to have that meeting or cancel.
Okay, yeah, because I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Martinez, because I know a lot of the staff that have kids who are off during that week, a lot of time people want to, um, take that time off for little family trips or getaway. So counsel, what are some of your thoughts? I know Counselor V. Hill is a teacher. Counselor Hensley is a professor. What are your thoughts on that?
I guess my question is, have we done this in the past? I don't think we've ever done that before. So.
Okay, and some more comments of?
I guess, so, um, I know I'm probably going to take a trip that week, but I also planned that that night I would, I would probably have to zoom in or something. So I, I'm, I'm willing to go whichever way.
And what are the dates again?
Um, so your second meeting in March will be March 13th. So the week of, let me get the dates, March 11th through March 15th.
Okay.
No, I think it's the 20th.
Oh, March 20th.
So that'd be the 18th through the 22nd.
Okay.
And again, this isn't a staff recommendation. It was, I think, something that just came up in conversation. And so as we, we're already booking items for your March agendas. So we just needed to know if council wanted to have that meeting or not.
Any comments, counsel?
I think we should meet.
Right?
Okay. I agree.
And if you're on a trip, you can always zoom in. We have, we have, uh, we have that in our manual, so.
Okay, alright.
Okay, sounds good.
We're good. Okay, alrighty. So now that brings us to, um, camp, uh, council comments. I'll start down there and see if Counselor Jackie V. Hill or we'll go this way. No, no, no. No council comments. Oh, Counselor Krebs, go ahead.
And it, it'll be brief, but it's going to be a little spicy. Um, well, I mean, this is one of our shorter meetings. I can't let that happen, can I? Um, and I made notes. We had a work session a couple of weeks ago, um, to wrap everything up. And we wrapped everything up in, I thought, a very complete way. And it was with the, um, all the work that we did for months, meeting with people. It was all the work. It was all the work that the staff did, working with us. And that evening, it was all the professionals, literally, that took the time out of their evening to come to yet another very long meeting and give their presentation of information to us. It was, it wrapped everything up very nicely. And a lot of information was, was put out there, and a lot of misinformation was, was answered, was squashed. It was, it was addressed and, and explained and everything. And I'll use the word disappointed, but not towards the city. I felt that the information didn't get out to the public in the way that it should have, and in a small, in a small area, bad on us. But I commend the staff for realizing that and putting out a press release, um, in the Friday tidbits that outlined all the information that was given, um, so that the public had access to it. Because when I was approached and asked, um, by people how it went because they weren't here, I went to direct them to the video and then realized that we did not have a recorded Zoom video of what was a very, very important and informative work session. And so, um, what I'm asking the city and asking the council to do is to consider the possibility of when those important work sessions come up that have such a large impact on the community, um, in its explanations and its answers, that maybe we record those so that they have access to them. And we, as a council, when approached, have a, a means to direct them to that information so that they can see it for themselves and hear it for themselves. And we not depend so much on others to put out accurate and just timely information that benefits the community as a whole. That's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Welcome. You're welcome. Counsel, any, uh, follow-up comments? Ms. Sanchez?
Mayor, I would just add that that's something we were talking about from a staff-level perspective as well, and, and, um, appreciate Counselor Krebs' comments. It's very much in line with the concerns we had as far as, um, not having the ability to, you know, three-hour work session where there is so much information that's presented and, and losing that opportunity to get that information to the public. And so, especially for those work sessions that are meteor, um, we've already added Zoom, except for the, when you do interviews next week. I think adding the recording isn't any big deal, and so it's, it's nice to know we're in alignment there.
All right, thank you. And I kinda did drop this, but we're, we're not allowed to talk to each other until these nights. So, I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. I was, I was disappointed, and again, not with the city, with how the public got the information. And so, I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs, and I'll just chime in too. I, I was, um, uh, disappointed, and I was, um, upset, and I was bothered, because all that time and energy that we put into that meeting and not to have anything recorded that we could share with the public about all of the things that we've come up with, and then to not be able to read it was really challenging. So, I, I think it's important as we move forward, when we know what's on that agenda for those work sessions with the meteor information, to make sure we record it, because it can be used as a tool to educate the public. That next day, we didn't have anything, anything except what was circulating out in the community, which, that really wasn't showcasing all the things that we've gone through. So, I'm really in favor of doing that as we move forward. I know we're not gonna vote on it or anything, but I think it's something that we learn from as we move forward, because sometimes we have to be able to share our narrative. If not, the narrative of others will be shared on the things that we've done. And there's no way that they can tell our story better than what we've done and the story that we can share by having this information in these meetings. Okay? Alrighty. With that being said, I see everybody in the back. You ready for me to do it, right? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Yeah, that was.